I'd like to call the September 8th, 2014 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the room?
Here.
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 Nice to have you here today. First item of business today is items for the city council meeting of September 11th, 2014. This is a time when anyone who wishes to speak to either items that will be on the agenda for Thursday's meeting or any other item that may do so. I do have one speaker's card, Mr. John Whitley. John, would you like to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'm John Whitley. I have been wrapped four times today. Thank you for the rain. Before I get into the body of this, I wanted to say that you should have been there on August 26th to see city government working at its best. In the street of Governor Berkeley Road, there was a city manager, the director of public utilities, and the chief of police meeting with residents to look at and to consider issues related to Governor Berkeley Road. Phenomenal. Again, I'm John Whitley, resident of 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I represent the residents of GBR, to which I shall refer. To decide the petition presented to you in August for you to take action to assure safe traffic conditions on our street, I'm here to update you on the steps taken to communicate our concerns about the traffic safety issues and to seek permanent resolution of those issues. We have amended the petition presented to council at your work session. We are citing two new traffic calming interventions that came from the neighborhood conversation with the city manager, the director of public utilities, and the chief of police in August 26. Curbside in front of 104 Governor Berkeley Road at the intersection of Tyler Brooks Road, over 80 percent of the households in GBR signed the original petition, and over 60 percent were present for the conversation. Since the street-side meeting, all households signing the original petition were informed of the outcomes of the conversation and support the amended petition to read. One, three-speed lump humps. Two, extra speeding sign. They're the ones that impose a $200 fine, up to a $200 fine. However, we believe the extra speeding fine signs will have minimal, if any, effect on safety, but we include them to support the recommendations of city staff. Mr. Mayor, we thank you for your leadership and your concern for the safety of the residents of Governor Berkeley Road. To Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Clayton, Chief Sloggy, we commend you for your commitment to engage the residents of GBR, to explore options, and for your commitment to facilitate the installation of cited calming traffic interventions. Mr. Mayor and city staff, it appears as if these interventions do not yield the expected safe conditions, we shall return to council for more effective interventions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else wish to speak to council, either about the agenda items for Thursday meeting or any other issue? If not, I'll turn to Mr. Tuttle for previews of the agenda for Thursday.
Yes, sir. On Thursday, we opened up with public comment on the goals, initiatives, and outcomes. Then we moved to three public hearings, special use permit for Copper Fox Distillery, planning unit development amendment for the city locked apartments, and some housekeeping amendments dealing with group homes and preliminary subdivision flat requirements. After the public hearings, we have two items under city manager reports, one of those being the potential list of legislative issues for the 2015 general assembly session, and a recommendation dealing with building inspection fees. Finally, the city attorney has one housekeeping item as well, dealing with service dog eligibility tax exemption. So that's what's on the agenda, and be happy to answer any questions or get you any additional information you may be aware of now that you'll need for Thursday.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions for the city manager?
Just maybe one comment. The public comments on the goals initiatives and outcomes, it's not a public hearing, but it's of the same purpose as a public hearing. It's for people to come and express their opinion about that particular matter at hand, and it's not an open forum.
That's correct.
So anybody, I just want people to be clear that that is not a time, if they just want to address another issue, to speak on that. That should come at the end of the meeting. It's a regular open forum.
Exactly. And also, along with that, we will, that evening, have a community meeting at the community building to further explore these, and there'll be times both at the October work session and October's council meeting to further discuss these. And I think we're going to have a presentation on communication, public communication, that also will provide some mechanisms.
That will happen.
Okay. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is background presentations and discussions. And this is a continuation of our retreat on Saturday, dealing with the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the next two years. And we're going to begin today with a series of presentations dealing with five of the areas that we look at for goals and initiatives. We'll do those presentations, and we'll sort of play this by ear, but essentially after each presentation, there may be discussion of that, and then if there are additional items on that particular topic, that might be the time to bring them up. Okay? So, Mr. Tuttle.
Let me introduce the first one. That will be Public Works Director Dan Clayton and City Engineer Aaron Small, and they're going to be talking about three transportation, prospective transportation projects. Mayor, city council?
Welcome. Dan and Aaron, thank you.
Okay. Like Jack said, we're here to talk about three of our three major road projects that we foresee coming up in the future. All these have implications, of course, on economic development. The first project is the Capital Landing Road bypass road intersection. Some of these you folks have already seen. This is a realignment of that intersection. Currently now, we have that long right-hand turn at that intersection. We're hoping that this redo of the intersection accomplishes two things. One is to improve the safety there, because we've had some accidents at that right turn merge lane coming into Capital Landing. We've had, like I said, some history of accidents there. And the second thing was to kind of get the northeast triangle kind of tied into the information center, and hopefully bring some activity to that side of town. This picture here shows one of the alternatives, which is the roundabout alternative, pretty big footprint. The Pancake House over here, their entrance is back, coming back in these two locations. And like I said, you can't see on this picture, underneath here is that right turn, the long right turn lane. So the other alternative to this was just your standard intersection design, four-way intersection design. And we, at this point, we think either one will work. We're not far enough along yet to make any decision on which alternative to go with. But this actually ends up being a pretty expensive project that's going to run, either way, is going to run close to $5 million. The roundabouts, a little bit more expensive, it's a bigger footprint, take up more land, more construction activity. So I'm going to turn it over to Aaron now to hit the next road project.
Our next project that we're going to talk about is Monticello Avenue from Traveran Drive up to Richmond Road, and that's the area, section of Monticello that we maintain as the city. The rest of Monticello is, of course, DDOT maintained. This is kind of the lower section here, and our plan for this road is to look at a five-lane alternative. And we've overlaid the Richmond Road corridor, you can see on this next slide. So you can see compared to the width of it. What you see here, the yellow lines here are the edges of the right-of-way, and through this lower section from Traveran Drive up to, this is Mount Vernon through here, up to that first entrance into the Waysburg Shopping Center, we actually have pretty close to the right-of-way that we would need to provide this section. We probably need about five feet on the William Mary side of the street where the old hospital was. When we move up into the upper section, this is the very start of that Waysburg Shopping Center property, up past Garrison and to Richmond Road. You see, we actually have five entrances on the Waysburg Shopping Center side of the road in pretty close proximity to each other. That creates a lot of complications. Also have an offset intersection with those entrances, with Garrison, as well as the two entrances between Garrison and Richmond Road into the Staples Parking Lot and the express parking lot, which are also offset from the Waysburg Shopping Center entrances. So there's a lot of complications in there. When you see, the next item to discuss is the right-of-way width through this area. As you can see where the current Goodwill Building is, it's basically, we have to be demolished in order to accomplish a five-lane section. This is the existing right-of-way, and you see, we would require approximately 20 feet on that side of the road in order to accomplish that. So our purpose here is to start looking at this potential now, so that we can analyze it for traffic and access, to modify some of the issues that we already have, and to be prepared for when the redevelopment of the Waysburg Shopping Center and/or the Monticello Shopping Center occur. The cost for this corridor we're looking is around $4 million, and that's excluding the right-of-way.
And excluding the demolition of Goodwill.
And excluding some of that work as well.
And finally, the last project we're going to talk about is the Ironbound Road Quarter. I don't have the whole quarter up here. This is just the area, obviously, between James Blair and Richmond Road. But the project goes from Richmond Road to Depew Drive Boulevard, I'm not sure which is it. This shows the intersection here. This project is going to run another, around $5 million as well for that quarter improvement. We're looking at a three-lane section, and then at the intersections, it'd be wider. This here, we're looking at, because of the, I guess, the nibbles or the bites we've had here for this redevelopment of the Governor Spencewood property, we want to move forward a little quicker. So we've talked to VDOT about breaking this part of the project out. This realigning Long Hill Road signal here, and then entrance into that property. It would make this to be like a phase one, something we can get done quickly, and a lot less money. We're looking for that, just for that thing, about $2 million, which gets you the signal and realignment, and some turn lanes, whatnot, around the intersection. Also, you know, this is the redo of the parking lot here at James Blair. They lose a few spaces, but not really too bad. So we've worked with, and talked with the school about that. So, like I said, this project's around $2 million. We think it's, and we have talked to VDOT, they're okay with breaking the project out. So we have started, we've got a little further along with this project than the other two.
Dan, I'm sorry. It started at five, but it's two, and is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Talk a little bit more about that.
The five took you from Richmond Road to Depew.
Okay.
That was the entire project.
Eastern State.
And we're just right now concentrating on this due to the potential development in this area.
So how far would that take you to the end of the James Blair property?
For this phase right here?
Yeah, this phase.
Yeah, it would take you there, and we'd do that parking lot realignment there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And just overall, it's basically a three-lane section. Of course, at the intersection, we've got wider, we've got some more turn lanes at the intersection. But you're looking at a three-lane section, sidewalk on one side, multi-use path on the other side. This is looking towards Depew, gives you an idea. The center lane, it's the center turn lane, like we have on the downtown stretch of Richmond Road. So that's what it would look like. Like I said, we're concentrating now just on that first phase and realigning Long Hill Road.
Both this last illustration and the one for Capital Landing Road, there's a significant portion of existing right-of-way that would no longer be used. So taking between the intersection there and the now.
Right here.
What would become of that?
We've talked a little bit, but obviously, it's extra property. You know, I don't know how you'd try to blend it in with this project best we could, I think.
Got you.
Well, the CVS is losing parking on the one side, so you could add it maybe on that side.
Yeah. We already, actually, we have some right-of-way, they gave us some right-of-way in that area. So this is probably off a little bit. I think the parking would actually stay, Mrs. Knudsen, because it's not quite exactly right.
I'll just interject that. There was a time when the city received an annual allocation of DOD urban funds and accumulated over time. First, it's allowed us to do a $15 million Richmond Road widening project back about 15 years ago now, allowed us to build Traveran Drive. Unfortunately, with the decline in state gasoline tax revenues and all the state transportation issues over that period of time, we're down to zero. Very little urban allocation money comes back. We have a little bit in the bank, and there may be some other sources of highway funding as money is beginning to be freed up that could be applied to these projects, but it is not anywhere clear what the funding sources will be really beyond this initial phase one of this project.
What Jack's talking about, it's the urban allocation, that's been gone since, like, 2010, and there was talk in 2018, but who knows what'll happen by then. That might come back in 2018. But a lot of localities got on board. Revenue sharing's a big hit. People put their money where their mouth is, and we've done that a lot with our sidewalk jobs. Actually, the reconstruction of Prince George Street, that's with revenue sharing. So, you know, but you've got to pay 50 percent. Before, it was 2 percent with Richmond Road. It's $15 million job, we paid 2 percent. So we paid whatever, $300,000 or something.
The world has changed.
Yeah.
Striking byline for each of these is the implication that they have for economic development. Each in their own different ways, and so just in that term, it's kind of hard for me to prioritize. But, you know, so I think as we continue to learn more about future opportunities at three different locations, will help us understand better which one of these may be.
Yeah, I think it's really going to be sort of windows of opportunity, but we need to go ahead and be doing the work so that when those opportunities come along, we're ready to move with it.
It reflects somewhat the conversation we had on Saturday, where if the opportunity may be the private sector investment in a particular area, that then, when combined with the public infrastructure investment, has an overall more significant impact in that particular application. So I guess we do have to be prepared to move when the time is right. Can I ask two questions? One about the Capital Landing Road realignment of the intersection, and the other about Monticello. On Capital Landing Road, and this may be the case with other parkway crossings, I just haven't, I don't notice it the same way I do here. When you go across, the parkway now is a pedestrian, there's a wall that isn't even knee-high, and it might look good from the parkway, but it can't, I mean, it just looks, it doesn't look right. It doesn't look safe. And if there's going to be any kind of project done here, because it looks like you're crossing over that existing bridge structure here, if not before, at least by then, I think we ought to be looking at what can or should be done there.
We have another one over on Amerimac Trail, same thing.
Yeah, and walking on Newport Avenue as well. When you're walking across them at.
And I think the sidewalk here, though, I don't know if the sidewalk's narrower here, but it just feels more, you feel more exposed there.
I think, obviously, that was at the time of the construction, I must have been okay, but I agree with you. It's a little scary walking across.
On the Monticello Avenue one, right now, one of the limitations of the current road configuration is as you're coming towards Richmond Road on Monticello from Newtown, that right-hand turn lane to Richmond Road is virtually nonexistent. It may be one car deep. Is there any more stacking capacity in the new proposed design?
It will be. It's not shown, but that is one of the things that we did talk about in some of our initial planning discussions, was increasing the length of this turn lane right through this area in order to provide just that.
It could be yet another separate additional right-hand turn lane, or simply that configuration as shown would give you effectively a right turn lane and then two lefts, and a straight through in the middle. So that might be, that would be significantly better than what's out there today.
Yeah, it might be adequate. It's really hard to say.
It's not a heavy movement, but it does get backed up, yeah.
Much of that will depend on the developer.
Sure. Thank you.
Any question? We may need you guys for a couple of things. Any other questions about those three projects? What about the other transportation goals? I think we talked Saturday a fair amount about pedestrian and bike connection, so I think we maybe covered that. I'm wondering if we might add something about electric car charging stations at the, particularly at the downtown garage, but maybe at the garage near the library as well. I saw in the newspaper this morning, the Newport News got five stations for a very small payout from the city through a federal grant program, and I'm wondering if there are a fair number of electric cars in town now, and whether we should be providing sort of charging stations at public parking facilities.
We took a look at it about nine months ago and didn't get any traction on it that time. We'll follow up with what they've done and see if there's a source of funding there, and also just see how much they cost if we can't find grant funding. But, so, yeah, we had that conversation this morning.
And in addition to the cost of installation, the cost of operation?
Well, right, there's going to be the power cost, the main, will be the main thing, and keeping it up. One thing nice about the parking garages, we were attended there a good deal of the time, so we have someone to keep an eye on it.
And any other of the issues under transportation?
I'll just make one more comment, that the other side of Monticello, from leading from Traveran all the way out to the city limit line, is another project again. If we could find a source of grant funding, that may well end up in the GIOs.
That's the sidewalk walking path, so that, you know, connecting with the college on Compton Drive and connecting with our sidewalks further up Monticello, and connecting that out to the city line. Any other questions? Dan, Aaron, thank you very much. Got lots of work to do.
No question.
Jack, you want to?
Sure. Next, Chief Dan and Deputy Chief Barker, they're going to talk about, under public safety, we have one item in there under public safety, officer, health, and wellness. So chiefs are going to brief us on what's taken place to date and what some of the initiatives may be in this area.
Mayor Holman, members of city council, we'll try to give you a brief overview here of our wellness and fitness initiatives. We do have, we've had a wellness, a fitness policy in place since 2007 that applies to both departments, but we've taken some different approaches to be where we are today with our programs. Initially, the policy implemented in 2007, the purpose of the policy was ensure that public safety employees were fit from the time we hire them, and they maintain that fitness throughout their careers. And the primary means of assessing that at the time was through our pre-employment physicals and our annual physical examinations that are provided by the city. So after those annual physical evaluations, the employees are put into three categories. They're fit for duty, which means they have no immediate medical conditions that would pose a hazard to themselves or to their coworkers in the performance of their duties. Or they're placed in an unfit-for-duty category, which means that they have a serious medical condition that places themselves at immediate risk or their coworkers while performing duties. And then we also had a category that's listed as marginally fit for duty. Marginally fit for duty means that the employee has a medical condition that, if it's untreated or unaddressed over a period of time, would lead to one of those immediate risks. Obviously, if a person is unfit for duty, they're removed from duty, and we deal with that appropriately. If they're in the marginal status, they continue to work, but they have to meet recommendations made by our physician. In addition, on the fire department side, for our employees, since that time, every employee is required to participate in one hour of physical fitness for each shift that they work. And for the administrative staff, they're required to participate in physical fitness at least three times a week sometime during their day. I'd be the first to admit that over a period of time, although we were making some progress, it wasn't significant progress, and we saw a need to make some changes. And one of the biggest changes was just the culture. The culture of the fire service has never been, you know, traditionally, it's been, we don't maintain our physical fitness after they come into the department. And it's the culture of the department itself, just the nature of being in the station and having to eat on the run and not eating healthy, and it causes different problems. So we saw a need to promote our health and wellness through several ways. Physical conditioning, so we have, we provide them with the time to work out. We're fortunate that we have a nice workout room at the station where they're able to utilize various means to work out. And we also had a physical, a personal trainer come in and develop physical fitness programs for each shift, to give them some guidance on what they should be doing to maintain their fitness. Also, through nutrition, in our annual safety stand-down, we brought in one of the local nutritionists who talked to all three shifts about, and the admin staff, about the importance of healthy eating habits. Although we were getting annual medical evaluations, we were not using an occupational physician at the time, so according to the National Fire Protection Association's health and safety standard, they recommend you use an occupational physician. So in 2011, we switched to an occupational physician. He better understands the requirements of our position very well, versus NFP standards, and he also understands the risk associated with the position. So that was a big transition for us, to have that occupational physician onboard. And one of the things we've just completed is, in October, we'll be conducting our first work performance evaluation. We went through a validation process, so each member of the department will be required to complete this work performance evaluation. It's performance-based skills, and they'll have a certain time limit to perform these skills. And it's eight skills that we would perform at any given structure fire, such as a ladder raise, forcible entry, victim drag. So each person will be required to go through that and meet that time limit, and October will be the first time that we'll be, we've done two validation tests, but this will be the first test that really counts for the time. We tried, with the change in the culture, we've tried to be constructive and supportive, and the people that need to make progress, we've offered various things. Again, the fitness room, we have some people that have some personal training experience on staff now, and we've developed a wellness and fitness committee that provides input and suggestions to those people that need that type of assistance. One of the things, the reasons, one of the reasons we do this, obviously, we want people to remain healthy, but this is one of the statistics that we continually fight as firefighters, is the fatality rates due to coronary artery disease are still above 40 percent. And time and time again, this has become, come to the forefront of the fire service about health and wellness, but we still struggle with that coronary artery disease.
Chief, is that national?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we've, the fire service traditionally has always been very, very good about taking care of our apparatus, taking care of our equipment, but we haven't been very good at taking care of ourselves, and that's one of our most important tools. So we're making some progress in that area, and we have great equipment, and we have quality training, but it's all for naught if we don't take care of ourselves, because our job is dependent upon our physical ability. because our job is dependent upon our physical ability. So, be happy to answer any questions from the-
Any questions for the-
Fire department side of it.
Just, I, I, I can, I guess I get the sense that, what, you did three 24-hour shifts? Is, is that how it works? Or three, I mean, the, your, the firefighters-
There, there are 10 days a month. It's called a 7:21 schedule. They work various days, but it's 10 24-hour shifts a month.
To me, that would be a hard routine in itself, but then to try to incorporate, you know, an hour of physical activity every day, and training and exercising, so, you know, I, I applaud your efforts to kind of change the culture, because that's what it really takes. I mean, I struggle with myself, just finding that time every day to, to try to stay in shape, so.
And what we encourage them, we encourage the senior leadership to take, take the role and organize it as a shift together, so the ones that may need more, a little more help than others, is that you draw them into that workout group and, and try to do it together and promote it. Not only that, it builds the team unity.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Andy?
Mayor, council members. Over the years, wellness and fitness among police officers has steadily declined. Long ago, it was common for officers to walk a beat. Today's law enforcement professionals have little physical activity in their day-to-day job. They spend the majority of their workday behind the wheel of a car or completing paperwork on a computer. They work irregular shifts, work unpredictable meals times, and they lead to poor dietary habits as a result of the time of the days that they're, they're working, like midnight shifts, and then they switch to day shifts in the time that they eat. For the Police Department, health and fitness represents a sound investment. We believe the fitness programs supported by the department will provide officers with the ability to meet life's daily demands without undue fatigue while maintaining sufficient energy for leisurely times and pursuits to overcome emergency situations that may arise personally or professionally. The Police Department aspires to promote a total fitness and wellness program where the officers have the requisite fitness to perform their duties, health risks decrease, and the quality of life improves, and the liability is reduced as the officer's ability to perform their duties increases with physical readiness. The Police Department promotes wellness through development of lifestyle behaviors taught and supported by the fitness administrators. These behaviors include regular exercise, nutrition, weight, and stress management. In 2011, two staff members from the Police Department were trained at the Cooper Institute as certified instructors. The Cooper Institute has designed fitness programs for the military, law enforcement, and public safety since 1976. The Institute provides specific training correlated with law enforcement, required tasks that have been validated and are defensible, utilizing the data from the largest study of its kind. Once certified, these two staff members developed a program to enhance officer fitness. In 2012, we developed and implemented a fitness policy that requires minimal standards. Since this time, officers have completed their annual physicals, where we also have fit-for-duty, marginally fit-for-duty, or not fit-for-duty. The physical at that time also assesses whether you are capable or you need to prepare for your physical assessment. The Chief of Police meets with the department's physician twice a year to discuss the overall wellness and the fitness goals of all of the officers. And any officers identified as marginally fit, they receive directed guidance from the physician and who is occupational fitness trained. In addition to that, they receive guidance from our fitness instructors and wellness instructors. They'll receive a plan where they can then go out and exercise in addition to their dietary needs, and they also meet with the physician from that point in time. They're set up on a schedule where they try to work towards the goal of becoming fit-for-duty once again. Our goals include continued enhancement of the employee's wellness and develop minimal standards for new recruits that are mandatory to maintain. This is the goal of our future department, is, is where the, when we hire future officers, that there is a physical assessment that they will have to pass before they actually become police officers. And then, like, as the fire department said, maintain that every year thereafter. Our goal is to also get officers who are currently within the department up to that standard, and then get them to maintain that standard. We've been successful thus far. We've observed a dramatic improvement in our annual assessments since 2012. We've had 11 officers and one civilian receive fitness awards for exceeding the standards that have been set by the Cooper Institute and the Police Department. The cultural wellness in the Police Department is changing as they discover the benefits of a fitness lifestyle. Last year, the physician for the Police Department noted that he was pleased to report that the majority of officers were found to be in good health.
Thank you guys both for your leadership and for being proactive in, in, in moving in this direction. I think it's, it's beginning to, to really show, and so, thanks. So, I'll turn to council for questions, comments.
I guess I have a question for both officers. Is mental health part of all this too? These are really stressful jobs, and I would think-
We, we have avenues to address mental health issues, and obviously, that's becoming more prevalent. We've seen it, you know, seen an increase in suicide rates with firefighters, and we're looking for ways to address that. And each year, we have that annual safety stand-down, so we try to come up with a different program every year, so that's something we're looking at for one of our annual safety stand-downs. But we did bring in, due to a situation that occurred within the department with, from a family member, we did bring in the critical incident stress debriefing team, even though it wasn't an employee, it was a, a family member that most of the department had known, and we did bring those in. They're available through the Peninsula EMS Council, just to talk with everybody, give them a chance to share their feelings, and actually, it was very, very well received in the department.
Police Department actually has a very comprehensive plan that's in association also with the city plan. Every month, officers are required to, supervisors are required to evaluate their officers on numerous areas of performance, on the use of sick leave, their work performance that they've gone, and they also, based upon their counseling as they have them on their weekly interactions with the officers. They complete a report that they actually follow monthly, so that they can see if there's any trends or any balances to go. And the, each Bureau supervisor, myself, Uniform Bureau, the Special Operations Bureau, we're all required to submit in our monthly reports to the chief what, any activity that we observe, which, you know, how many officers, and, and what's going on with that. If we do observe the trend, we have programs that are set in place to where they can get counseling, and there is a method where, in the event that the employee is not so inclined to seek counseling on her own, if you believe that it's interfering with her work, you as a supervisor can require them to go to counseling. We don't receive the actual report on what occurs during the counseling. They just notify us whether or not they attend, but that we can initiate the process and ensure that they get going. So, it, we, as a, a part of being accredited through PLEA, the National Accreditation, they have a whole set of standards that you're required to maintain. They also are the ones that came up with that definition that you saw up there that I first read. They're trying to incorporate a standard that we'll have to follow in the near future as well, as part of that accreditation process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I, obviously, you know, the health of, of your departments goes a long way just beyond just the personal, but, you know, a healthy employee is less susceptible to injury, it keeps them on the job, keeps them, you know, gainfully employed. If somebody's not there, it makes it harder for shifts to be filled adequately, and then that consequently, it has, you know, jeopardizes what happens in the community. And so, I, obviously, this is, you know, a way to go, and to, to make sure that, you know, the city residents, you know, get the protection that, that you all provide, and then, just from a personal perspective of the officers that, that perform these duties, being, being healthy is a much better way of life, so.
Thanks.
For both of you, can you talk a little bit about how you think in general, the individual members of your teams have actually embraced this as opposed to are just doing it because it's a requirement? The results that people are going to get are going to be far more beneficial if they really apply themselves instead of, I have to go do something for an hour, I'll do something.
Yeah, and we, we've actually, you know, even though we require an hour, we've actually, you know, if people can work out for 30 minutes, if they do it the right way, that's a, that's a pretty good workout, so, you know, we don't stick to the hour as much, but I think, pretty much in the fire department, it, it's been embraced. It's, you know, it took a while to get there, because traditionally, it's just not one of the things that we've been accustomed to. But outside of, you know, a few people who we're still trying to bring along, I think most people have embraced it and are really putting forth the effort, and as Councilman Pons pointed out, not only do we see, we, we have healthy employees, but we want tenured employees who are able to retire and, and have a healthy life after they retire, and we look out for, you know, hopefully reducing some, some health insurance costs. But overall, I, I've been pleased with the way it's been embraced. Again, it's, it's been a challenging road at points, but, but I think we're making, making significant progress in the fire department.
The same is true with the Police Department. As I mentioned, we had 11 officers and one civilian actually receive awards for it. We've incorporated this into our awards program as well, to where if you can exceed the standards, you can earn an award for that process. It's actually become kind of a friendly competition among some officers, and we've got about a third of the officers that have exceeded that program. There's about another third that are well within the maintaining in the middle, and then of the last third, about a third of those, I don't know what we're going to do, if we're going to be able to bring them along, we're trying our best. And then, I think the other two-thirds of that last third is, is trying to motivate themselves to get into the program, because there's a lot of peer pressure in this. I feel it myself, whenever they're going down the hall, they'll talk to you. I, I really think the culture is changing, especially as we bring younger people onboard. They're very attuned to wellness as a whole, and I can remember when everyone in the Police Department smoked. And then I can tell you now that if someone was to, if it was allowed to break out a cigarette, two-thirds of the people would admonish them for smoking. The whole culture and the environment has changed over the years, and it is becoming more geared back towards wellness. But this is something that the officers are, are having to, to learn to do on their own as well as while they're working.
When can we look forward to the police versus fire fitness challenge? You want to get, you want to get people motivated to work together towards a goal.
I'm not so sure I want my officers climbing up those long paddles.
Competition is definitely healthy.
There's a hockey game that I'm pretty sure you'd say should do. Thank you, guys. It's all very positive.
Yeah. Pat and Andy, thank, thank you very much, and, and again, I hope you'll convey to your, to, to the firefighters and, and police officers how much we really value them and, and value their participation in this, and, and because it really is, yeah. I know this is trite, but it's family in a way, and, and, you know, we really care about them and, and really are pleased to see this, so I, I think you guys deserve a lot of congratulations for, for taking hold of this and running with it, so, thanks.
Thank you.
As they're going, I just add too, that what the fire and the police are doing, even though theirs are particularly related to job requirements, and that's why they're, but that's leading the way for the rest of the city workforce, and, and so, we're, we're seeing what they're doing and learning and hoping to pull that sum into the wellness program for all city employees. It's a bigger, bigger picture there, too.
Thank, thank you guys, again. Are there other public safety issues that?
Well, the ones we have on the list are, there's facility improvements and station upgrades that are in here, police crisis intervention capacity, police and fire, community and school engagement strategies, parking review program, those are the some that are on the list now that we're, that we're thinking may well develop into initiatives.
We talked about some of those on, on Saturday. Any, any others that people want to?
I have a question. I, I'm not really, I'm not sure if this is the timeframe for it, but, and I probably should have asked two gentlemen this question. We, there are a fair number of exercises that take place periodically for major situation preparedness. Is it, regionally, are there resources for mobile command and control centers?
Well, we have our own version of that, in, in the fire department in particular, where, that, but there are not separate resources-
Something that can be used to coordinate the efforts of a lot of different people from different units working together?
Well, I can have, I can have Chief Dent speak to that. From emergency management.
Yes.
Right. If, if, you're talking about a, a mobile command post?
Yes.
We, some of the other localities have those. We had one at one time, it was a very old version, and actually had a lot of repairs and engine problems that, that needed to, that was far more expensive than it was worth. We've looked into some grant opportunities, but we do have, York County has a mobile command post available, Newport News has one available, and as, as long as it's not being used at the time, we, we have the avenue to call and, and request that resource. In the six year, almost six years that I've been here, we've had to request them one time, and actually, that was a combined fire, police with a hostage situation, and, and we requested the command post, and it was resolved by the time the command post arrived.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's necessary for the city to own one, it's just, as long as we have the resources regionally, that's very helpful.
And we also have some of the specialty teams that, in the region, that have mobile command posts that are available to us if, if the need arises.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay?
Okay. Next, we're going to ask Peter Wallentish and Jody Miller to speak to an initiative that's Cooking with Williamsburg Health Foundation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be able to share with you a project that myself and Peter Wallentish, our Human Services Director, as well as several of members of his team in Human Services, has been working on. We're calling it the Williamsburg Child Health Initiative, and this focus, or this initiative is really focused on providing better health outcomes for city children. We are working with the Williamsburg Health Foundation. They're actually sponsoring a planning grant for the city, as well as CDR, and the Williamsburg James City County School System to work on, to work on this program. And the whole process is being facilitated by the Community Health Solutions Group out of the Richmond area. Our planning process focuses on specifically right now, the city of Williamsburg and Williamsburg Children, building relationships among all the partners that I mentioned, the city, as well as CDR and schools, identifying action steps for improving services and support, as well as implementing a simulation activity to review resources that are available, current processes, and procedures as we move forward. We started this planning process back in the spring of 2013. So, the process has led the group to focusing on a care team model approach that supports city, not only city children, but city families, and providing overall better health outcomes. And Mr. Wallentish is just going to say a little bit more about this concept of a care team model.
Mayor, City Council, we coined the phrase "care team" here because of, it represents a model that works very effectively, particularly in a small locality such as ours. I think that's, that's something to really emphasize. And what's behind it is the fact that children, along with elderly, disabled, are our top priorities. As you know from the summer program, our children are our future, we invest in them, we want to make sure that their needs, both physically and emotionally, are met in the most comprehensive way, and that's, that's what drives this. And also, what, with a child who, I'll use the social work term, has a failure to thrive, which you've all heard, it's usually not in isolation, it's tied into the family system, the family needs, the dynamics, what's not happening there, whether it's nutrition or nurturance, or other things that may be going on. So, the, the key behind this is that we have a, a very strong family system approach in intervening with our children. Secondly, is that the earlier you start, the more chance you have of some successful outcome, so instead of- successful outcome. So instead of what most systems do out there, is it's a reactive mode, meaning the crisis happened, so you go do the damage control. We're trying to get way before that into an earlier intervention-prevention approach. And again, the younger we start, the better chance of success in terms of outcomes. As I said earlier, it's a comprehensive family approach, meaning we look at the needs of every family member that's in that unit to see what those needs might be at every level, so that we can address the situation not only with the child, but with the family. The other part that's, this is where CDR and the schools come in. We already have established relationships with them by referral, et cetera. That's not new. But using the care team model as an effective multidisciplinary approach brings both the collective wisdom and experience and knowledge base of all the parties involved in that family together, so that we can come up with a strategy and a workable plan. And again, last but not least, is getting the family involved and beginning to understand what the needs are for them to change certain aspects of their lifestyles and whatever's going on. Again, as we said, the multidisciplinary support team is critical. It may also involve other individuals who are relevant to that child or to that family. It could be an uncle, a pastor, a friend, whoever it is that can help with a given situation. And the key here, too, is that human services then becomes the primary case manager. What normally happens when you work with people across agencies, be they public or private, is everybody does some piece of the work, or has a piece of the puzzle. But no one has the time or the inclination to try to bring it together, because it's, first of all, very labor-intensive. And then the systems aren't designed that way. They're basically silos that do well with whatever they're doing, and so on. This actually makes us cross all our boundaries, again with permission from the client, from the family, so that there can be a free exchange of information among the relevant providers already involved or that need to be involved, and that we work together as a multidisciplinary group to effect change with the cooperation of the family. Again, all the needs are assessed, and there's ongoing case management that's done in the process. So as you can see, we're helping the family develop the life skills, the tools, to become change agents for themselves, not just us doing it for them. Certainly, them understanding the value of what's happening and making some changes in whatever needs to occur. And that's essentially it. I think that's the last slide, right?
I just would add, part of the work that we've been working on with the planning grant is taking this approach and seeing how they directly impact and support better health outcomes for children. So it's something that, through the planning grant process, will continue until the end of the calendar year. Our hope is that by the springtime, we'll be in a place to submit a grant application to the Health Foundation to actually take this model and implement it on a pilot program level with some city families, to really sort of structure this process and program in a way that helps us evaluate and track the health outcomes of city kids based on the pilot program.
Terrific. Thank you all. This is really an innovative program in many ways. I really appreciate this. I'll turn to council for any questions or comments.
Could you, I'm just having a hard time understanding the concrete nature of what the care team is doing with a, could you give us an example of what the care team would do with a child and family to help them?
I think I want Mr. Wallentish to handle that part of it.
And I'm sure there are 100 different or 1,000 different permutations.
Every scenario is different, absolutely. If we find that a child is, for example, take the failure to thrive part of it, is the child's health, weight, ability to focus in school, et cetera, et cetera, and I could use, again, as you said, several permutations there, is impacted, we really do an intensive job of looking into what's causing that. Now, could simply be medical, or other issues, or genetic, or whatever it is. Ninety-some percent of the time, it's well beyond that. It's poor nutrition, lack of nurturance, or inability to parent well enough for that child to feel nurtured. So again, if you, if a child, and we see this all the time. We have social workers calling us, guidance counselors, teachers, et cetera. If a child is not doing well in school and cannot concentrate and doesn't look healthy, which, and those are all hand-in-hand, you know, it's the body, mind, soul balance, really, that, so if something's out of whack, out of balance in that child's life, you really need to look at all the aspects of what might be causing that, and then start putting things into place that changes it. Nothing is in isolation, I can tell you that rather confidently. So again, we look at what's causing, what are the possible causes? Again, you have to really dig into what's going on. You need the family cooperation, et cetera. Most parents I know care enough about their children to work with us to solve that child's problem, physical, emotional, or otherwise. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it does help. And what entity or individual is charged with that initial diagnosis, analysis, triage of the situation, to try to determine what's really going on here, and where, and how do we prioritize our action steps? Who does that?
We could get the referrals from any number of sources, but let's say the school nurse is concerned, or, it doesn't matter what the origin is.
No, but somebody has to look at the situation and then
That's correct.
holistically determine a plan of action.
And what we're saying in this pilot, for the city families, we will be the principal case manager. We have an MSW that we brought on because of this pilot here, that does the initial assessments. And they will in turn be communicating with individuals who have their respective qualifications in the medical area, in the mental health area, or whatever it is, if that's needed. So if you have a child that's, has undiagnosed ADHD, or, you know, any type of attention deficit disorder, autism spectrum, whatever it might be, again, the emotional and the physical and the mental health are all tied together here. And you've got to sort those out and make sure you have just the right approach, and/or medication if that's necessary, and anything else that might be needed. The beauty of this is that the case manager tracks all of that. And that case manager would be our city social worker, so that we don't lose perspective of what's going on with that family. And that, I think, is the biggest asset here.
Are there any barriers to the communication of specific health information across these different platforms of support?
Not if you get, we have a universal release of information that goes both ways. It gives permission for us to talk to other parties and for them to talk to us. And the parents are fully apprised of that before they sign.
So they have to agree to apply?
Absolutely, yes. You have to give permission for that exchange. What's nice, again, about being in a smaller community such as the city, is we already, half the battle there is we already have either knowledge of or a trusting working relationship with some member of that family. And that goes a long way to get the rest of it in place.
Thank you.
I would just add to that as well. One of the things that we talked about within the planning process is that some of these supports and services may be set up, say, for younger children, sort of zero to five. But essentially, once you get to the age five, based on federal grants and programs and things, you can age out of some of the service and programs. And so, looking at what the needs are of children and families, especially as you get in that elementary school age period, is one area that we've identified that there's lack of services or disconnect outside of what the Department of Human Services is doing for that case management piece of it.
Scott?
This is a really interesting concept, and, you know, it's one that would be interesting for me to stay prised up as it continues. I'm glad you all are participating. And I think we, the city has a really hands-on approach that lends itself to this being successful.
Thanks.
Doug?
Well, you know, I can't tell you how proud I am to be a part of a city that has this type of effort being put forth to help the children that are in need. And I don't know how our, how our children base versus maybe James City County, York County, what those percentages are. And it's almost irrelevant. Just, just the concept of having, having a dedicated, you know, pool of people from, from the school systems to your, your office, you know, helping children in need, I mean, it's just, it's a matter of pride that I have that we're doing that. So, congratulations, and hopefully we can get this grant, and hopefully it does a lot of good.
Judy?
At a couple of points in my career, both Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Wallentish will remember, I've been involved in this kind of thing a little bit. And I, not only the preschool task force, which is a whole other issue, but there was a committee at one point that tried to get the school social workers, and the Williamsburg city social workers, and the James City County social workers on the same page, talking to each other. And it, the silos were definitely there, but what we ran into was paperwork, as much as anything else. The paperwork was different. I mean, there was, there was very little, people were communicating past each other, as I recall. So I'm, I'm assuming you're dealing with that. That, that was a huge issue, and one that we couldn't overcome. And it wasn't, the families were not the problem. It was the employees really were the problem.
Well, it was actually worse from the family's perspective, because if I'm the mom or the dad, and I was dealing with three different entities-
Right.
-which is very normal, three or more, five, whatever it might be. I had to go through a different application process and start saying the same thing all over to each person. Now, again, to go back to, once we have the primary case manager, we have the exchange of information, we get everybody on board. So from my perspective as a parent, then, I'm relieved. I don't have to deal with three, five individuals all the time. You know, I have someone who helps me coordinate that, and wherever we need to go, or what we need to do, I have a trusted figure that knows everything up to the minute as to what's going on from all the parties, can tell me what that's about, and also then help me maneuver the systems that I'm dealing with. That's a huge benefit. And it's hard to explain that here, but believe me, from a parent's perspective, you don't have to keep repeating the same thing over and over again and fill out more and more forms. The systems, in that sense, everywhere, not just in Virginia, across the country, are relatively fragmented by their own profession.
Well, and their legal, the legal issues. I mean, the schools had different rules for the social workers, then the city, then the county. I mean, it was, it was just...
And again, the difficult part is, again, the beauty of being smaller, we can pay more attention to our citizens. Most larger entities, and this is true everywhere, have no capacity to take on the primary case management roles. They're all way too busy. And that's why, and that's why we have a Youth and Family Services Division for that reason, because no one else could actually pull it together for the family.
Yeah.
So this just is a continuum of what we've already started implementing, but allows us to get into a very tangible pilot at this point.
Well, it's wonderful, and I hope it works. I think it's great.
Yeah, well, I think all of us are really looking forward to seeing how this develops in, you know, both the pilot project and how it goes beyond that. But I guess the one question I have is, I see how, sort of, once a child enters school, that, you know, you may be able to pick up the, what about very young children? What, how, what do you see as the mechanisms for picking up the issues, you know, for, you know?
For, yeah, birth, yeah, refer birth to three or whatever.
Again, we start as early as possible. But again, when you look at the primary case management role, if that child is being served by CDR, CDR stops at three. Then you got the toddler, unless, you know, we have a grant with them, we're aware. But we are still the constant factor. We would then, we know what happened before. We know what's happening now. We help the parent, family, the child transition to the next stage, and then ultimately into kindergarten and school. I don't know if you remember, Mayor, we had a project with Matthew Whaley some years back now. It goes back to before Andy Jacobs. But here's the point about it, is we actually helped the children transition into kindergarten from the preschool and head start, or whatever other daycare they were in. That was a cooperative venture with the schools to help that transition. Again, we were the constant factor. Family knew us, and we helped move from stage to stage. But then again, there's always one person and one entity that knows where the family's at, at any given point in time. And that's the beauty of this.
Well, terrific. Thank you all for taking this on. And again, as I said, I think we all look forward to seeing how this develops. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our last presentation.
Could I ask one question about the human services, the transitional housing?
Yes.
Are we anywhere with that?
That is a, an issue which is becoming all the more challenging in Williamsburg, and one where we have to identify where we're going to make significant progress dealing with homeless prevention, and dealing with the number of families that can, are unable to take that next step up into stable housing. And the city particularly has that issue. And so that is a, will be one of the things we're going to be looking at over the next two years, and what we can do in addition to what we're already doing in that area.
Yeah. I mean, my sense is we're, we're at a stage where there's some, some work going on, but, but we really need to make this an initiative, but it's not clear where it's going to end up. But there's certainly, you know, awareness of the complexities of the issues that are out there. So I think we're going to have to, it's a complex issue, and it's going to take complex solutions, I think.
Sure. And just before we leave it, also on the list, under human services and education, will be the, the school issues that we know are coming up in the next two years, both the fourth middle school and getting ready for the next five-year contract with James City County. The consolidating what has already taken place in the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, bringing that into a single unit as part of the city government. But then, and then as that is accomplished, then what are the next major initiatives that we want to be doing through the housing authority to address housing issues in the community? And finally, I will also put on here as a possibility, and that is Cedar Grove Cemetery, and do we have an opportunity to, to do some expansion of that, working with the college? So those are just a couple of areas that we think are possible.
Any questions? Okay?
These five things really are illustrative of the range the local government gets in. We are in a lot of lines of business all at once. And the last one is dealing with parks and recreation, and particularly an open space opportunity that we have before. So I'll turn it over to Reed and Carolyn and Robby.
They're going to put you in the middle, Robby. Thank you all.
This has been talked about for a long time, the park at Capital Landing. When I was three years old, it was put in the city's comprehensive plan. So...
The city could not have had a comprehensive plan. That was before planning was a profession.
And Patrick Henry did, right?
But it's been in every comprehensive plan since. I guess, Carolyn, about a year or so ago, you initiated conversation with the son of the property owner, and we've continued that. And we now have an appraisal of the property that's in progress. What you see on the map outlined in red is where the park would be located. We're looking at, it's part of a four-acre parcel. And the Witten House is also on the parcel. But what we're looking at is the lower two acres of the parcel that has the creek front. This Capital Landing, as we all know, was one of the city's two colonial ports. The other colonial port on College Landing is also a passive park for the city. And the idea is this park- And the idea is this park, which is the same size, could also become a passive park. So we would have our two colonial ports as now parkland, bookending of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area. This is a concept for the park. We're in the really schematic phase. Carolyn and I and Robbie and Lori have been out on the site looking at it. And the conceptual idea now is there would be a pull-off and some parking along Capital Landing Road. There would be a trail to the passive park area, which could include a canoe kayak launch. It could include a small fishing pier. It could include some trails. It could include some interpretation of this as, as the colonial port site. What you see in green is area that is now currently cleared. Now, this is the cleared area alongside of Capital Landing Road that could be used for the pull-off and the parking. And might be a little bit of additional clearing that would be needed. And then this is the view of Queens Creek from the park area. So that's really a brief overview of where we are now, looking at this for possible city acquisitions of passive park. And we should be receiving the appraisal on the property shortly. But we're all available now for any questions you may have. And Robbie, I'm sure could answer any questions from operational view of Parks and Rec.
Great. Thank you all very much. Paul, questions, comments?
Just more comment. I think we, for a long time, we've all thought this would be a terrific addition to the community and nothing's definite yet, but I appreciate all the effort here and hopefully it will come together. I'm sorry, is it connectivity between Capital Landing and, and the College Landing? Is there, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about that.
Carlton Abbott developed a landing, the landing concept, you know, what, 20, 30 years ago, so.
Well, that, I think it was, it was maybe 10 years ago.
10.
That was laid out, it really didn't fly, I guess, say. The, the one thing as far as connectivity goes is we do have directly across Capital Landing Road, Queen Mary's Port, a subdivision that has been approved. So as that develops, there will, sidewalk will be extended from where it ends now by Brandyline. So there will at some point be sidewalk down to here, so there could be a connection across there. So there would be pedestrian access. The vehicular access will only be right in and right out, it would appear to us at this time, because there is a median in the street. So maybe a tad awkward to get in and out of it, but people will get, get used to that. And when we, you know, when we looked at the access, you know, we kept in mind, which Robbie reminded us of, this with the trail and everything, we need to make the access into the park ADA accessible. So that will be done as part of it when we get into the actual planning for the park.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what you said, Reed, about the, you know, connection to our two historic ports and, you know, connections to both watersheds, the cities. And it makes a whole lot of sense. There's a lot of beautiful territory between there and the Old Bridge, so.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, the, just the historical significance of it. You know, I think it's, it's something that ought to be a part for future generations to be able to appreciate. And while it's, it's small, I think it's, it's invaluable for what it can offer. So I think it's good.
Robbie, how much maintenance does the other port park require?
We, we would have to go every day, check for trash, make, make sure it's, it's clean, the path is, is clear, no debris. So it would just be an every-day visit.
Are there, is there trouble with people trying to camp overnight?
We have not experienced that yet.
Good, thank you.
Good. How, how much archaeological work has been done here and it is, how, how much of the original port, because there were major warehouses and buildings, things are here, was it further up the creek or under what's now the bridge? Do we know much about that?
In the DHR site for the historical park, Reed, if you can give me the switcher. The site actually goes way over into here, comes back across and does it over in here.
Yeah.
I know we did the research over in here, but I don't think very much has been done over here, so that's another opportunity to, to have that done as we develop the park.
Terrific. Okay. Great.
Also, as, as the concept of the cap, the landing to landing trail was, was in the great city walks.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But there was never a landing at that end.
Not end, right. But, but now there will be. And again, with, you know, with sort of, if, if that intersection at Capital Landing and Bycat Pass gets improved, that would, you know, that will be pedestrian and bicycle friend, friendlier than what exists now. And, and then with Capital Landing, you're into the restored area and Henry Street. I mean, so it's, it's, most of the pieces are there right now.
Most of the pieces are there.
Okay, terrific. Thank you all very much. This is exciting. We look forward to moving ahead with this. Other, other recreation and culture things that you want to particularly, we talked about a number, almost all of these things, we talked about elements of them on Saturday. So are there things that you particularly want to?
Well, there's continued capital improvements in our, in our parks such as Kiwanis, Quarter Path, Waller Mill, that are already identified in the CIP. So those, those would come forward and be, be initiatives over the next two years. There are ideas which have been, are already born, but have a way to go, such as this century gallery project, the library renovation and renewal project that will follow on the Stryker Center, once, once those sort of library offices moved out into Stryker Center. And also an arts district sculpture project, all fall under recreation and culture.
Any questions, comments, additions?
Just a, just a, maybe a comment, something to think about, you know, as we talked about sports tourism Saturday. What level, so I guess a question, what level of, of conversation happens between the other jurisdictions in terms of what gets built and how can what we do complement what our neighbors may do so that we don't duplicate efforts? And I think as, as we talk about a field house and whether that comes to fruition and, and what that relationship may be with our, our neighboring counties, how do we, how do we look at some of the other recreational facilities in, in the future and how do we, how do we do that?
In a coordinated way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if the alliance might be the, the best mechanism for coordinating that communication. I mean, a lot of communication already takes place between, particularly between, you know, our Parks and Recreation in James City County and to some extent, you know, York County. So that could, but I, I mean, on, on this sort of bigger level.
For the, for the projects that relate particularly to tourist, sports tourism, where facilities are being developed in order to, then that's really where the alliance needs to come in and say, what facilities do we need to drive that piece? Parks and Rec on, on the two counties of the city do keep one another well-informed about what they're doing. And sometimes it's for collaboration, such for instance, the dog park at Waller Mill was done in conjunction with James City County with James City County funding that helped, helped put it in there. So sometimes we're, we're doing true joint ventures, more often than not, each one is doing their own project, but everyone knows about it and can fit it into the overall product.
But I, I wonder if we should ask the alliance to, to really be proactive in bringing together, to think more broadly about sports tourism.
Their priorities are in terms of what facilities, first, second, and third.
And I think where the alliance could help is, is putting more, more of that economic opportunity spin on, on how to, how to do things and, and, you know, to help target certain, you know, help understand what the market is saying, they'd like to see, and what are we missing, what are they hearing that we're missing from a sales point? And so that when the, if the county's gonna build another ball field, you know, maybe we can do it together and build two, that type of thing.
And as we discussed Saturday, it's not that they haven't been asked for it in the past.
Yeah. Well, hopefully they'll, they'll hear us now.
Any other thing, any other issues on recreation and culture?
Our last issue is the, to turn to, say Kate and Mark. They're going to talk to us about citizen engagement, particularly what we're doing with our agenda, our Granicus agenda system and Speak Up Online. So, there we go.
Mayor Hallman, members of city council. Kate and I are here today to talk about two new citizen engagement services that we have recently launched, primarily last week. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the technology and the services, then I'm gonna hand it off to Kate, she's gonna tell you exactly how we're gonna actually use the, these new The services, there are two, there are two kind of subservices under a broader umbrella of citizen engagement. They're designed and implemented to encourage and hopefully support improved citizen engagement. Every one of them are integrated with our Granicus platform. Granicus, for those of you who do not know, they provide us with streaming media capabilities. They provide us with the iLegislate app that you all use, that we all use for, for meeting management, as well as the agenda creation piece. And it should be noted too, that these services are, we're using them primarily as a, as a kickoff point for the GIO process. However, they will be up constantly and be able to be used constantly as well. The first one of these services is what we're calling eComment. EComment allows anyone to comment on a specific agenda item from the internet. When they go into the, the webpage, they see the agenda, they see the eComment functionality there. They select eComment, they're able to go right into that specific agenda item and then indicate their response, provide feedback or what have you on that particular agenda item, allowing us to keep the context specific and focused on that particular item. It does require sign-up, username, first and last name, as well as the address. These comments then flow into the website for all to view. They also flow into your iLegislate app for you to see and for, for those of us using iLegislate within the meeting, to be able to see those comments within the context of the meeting. Currently, we cut off commenting 30 minutes prior to the meeting, that's a configurable parameter. We can certainly increase that, decrease that as, as council would choose. So this is a screenshot of the iLegislate app. I've just selected a, a particular one off of an agenda and landed at this point. We're all familiar with this. We have the, the topic here, as well as any supporting documentation over here. You'll notice here, we have a red box around, these are buttons, and right here, this one says zero public comments. If there were in fact public comments there, the zero would then increment towards the number of comments that we currently had. You would then select that button and then that would take you to this page. Within this page at the top, you see the concept of, of the users commenting on it, whether or not they're indicating their support, their opposition, or whether or not they remain neutral on that particular topic. If there were in fact comments where the, the person making that comment indicated this, then we would have numbers associated with that. So just at a glance, you'd be able to look and see how many of these comments, how many were supportive, how many were in opposition, and how many just indicating comments but, but were, were fairly neutral in terms of, of their stance on the topic. And then down here at the bottom, right in here, the, the comments as they come in would then be listed here and you'd be able to read all the comments and what have you.
And who made the comment.
And who made the comment, exactly. All right, so that's it for, for eComment. The next service that, that we're launching is Speak Up Williamsburg, and that is speakupwilliamsburg.com. It's a website that allows for citizen input on specific topics. Again, we're launching this in conjunction with the GIO process. However, there's always a general statement up on the speakupwilliamsburg.com that essentially is, is an idea generation, idea creation type of question and, and comment capability that says, how can we improve the city of Williamsburg? The system is monitored, obvious reasons, profanity filters and what have you, just to ensure that, that everyone is using the system the way that it should be used. For the GIO process, we're going to structure these, these, the concept of these questions around these major goal areas. So for example, character of the city, we would have listed, we would have some text that would tell you and tell the citizen, you know, kind of what, what are we talking about here, character of the city? We'd be able to link out to other documentation as well. And then underneath that, we would be able to have input, take input from citizens, discussions, forums, and then even survey them and then get that results back, get the results back from that particular survey and then share that out. And then lastly, topics, we can add topics at any time. This is a service that we control completely. So should we want to survey about a particular item or, or kind of gather citizen input about a particular item, we can add that at any time. And with that, I'm gonna hand off to Kate, she's gonna tell you how we're gonna use it.
That's the tricky part. No, um, hi. Let me start by saying that basically this is a, is a great tool. We've looked at a lot of them for a long time. And, and the reason, this one appealed to us for a couple of reasons. It has that, for me, it has that ability to comment on a specific item. And I think that makes it, it is unique, because we get hit up with a lot of vendors. And I think that makes it more relevant, because for, for all the whistles and bells and fantasy things, what we're really doing is talking about building community and how do we extend the reach and how do we get some voices that we don't hear? So this is just one more tool in the toolbox. We've been, since 2008, just to remind you, we've been having these online forums. We started with Peak Democracy, which was a pilot program, and it's been great. We've had several hundred people each time. It was less sophisticated in its, in its makeup, so basically you have the question, we could put information out, PDFs, and people would comment. And it, it did as well as it could do, it was great. I think we found that we'd pretty much gone as far as we could and that some of the feedback we got, Robbie's getting from residents who were even ones who were particularly engaged, said it was too cumbersome to sign up. And to me, when I hear something like that from someone who comes to meetings and is interested, then that's not what we want to hear. So, so what we do is with this new ability, we have, not only is it part, it's part of Granicus, which also makes it relevant, it's not off freestanding, but we have different abilities, we talk about different conversations. Each community that's done this, and this is what I'm looking forward to, makes it its own. So what we have is a tool, but what the community itself is gonna really dictate how this is gonna look and behave. It's up to the people how they wanna, how they wanna engage. We have the ability to do discussions. Here's Minnesota, you can actually do topics, something a little broader, it's the kind of thing you might see on a Facebook discussion. And we're gonna try some of these. We also have a forum, which is probably about more like the goals and initiatives, where you have a specific issue and we have the, the information, people comment. We can also do surveys, which is a nice tool to have. We've, we've had some of that in-house, but this is ability to do this. So like Mark said, this is something we've been doing for a long time. This isn't just a one-time shot. And then we have what we refer to the open ideation, which is a little broader. And we're gonna play that by, we're gonna see, I think part of the trick we find with all the different methods is how people have different goals and ideas. Some people are gonna be drawn to a question that says, how do you improve Williamsburg? And for those people, this is right, somebody like me, I'm like, I don't have time to think necessarily about a big picture idea, but I could come and comment on a specific issue. And I think that's what we're gonna find is the beauty of this tool, that we can see how are people engaging, are they not? We keep them all open for those people who do want to think big picture, they'll have an opportunity. And it's all out there for other people to share. I've watched, this was in Austin, you know, the thing to remember too is no, no one tool is perfect and is gonna do everything. So with some of the questions with Austin, I looked at it and I thought they had 60 people signed up. You know, so you're thinking if you want a thousand people, it may not be that, but those 60 people were probably engaged and we got some good ideas out of it. I think we found with the Stryker- I think we found with the Stryker project, which had very little whistles and bells, I was just posting ideas, so that was very low tech. I think the quality of the comments we received were really thoughtful and interesting. So I think just remember what our goal isn't, not necessarily the whistles and bells, but what we're actually getting out of it. So just to remind, I think to address Vice Mayor Freyling's question, this is just one more thing that exists. So as always, to communicate with council, we have, you can talk in person, we have public meetings, we have the council meeting today, Thursday, we've got the public workshop. So hands-on, in-person is always just as important, we're small enough, we can do that. But we also have emails, you have Facebook, Twitter, we still do. The algorithms on Facebook and Twitter are changing, I'm just reading this past week, with the need for ads to get your voice out. That concerns me because I know people are out there, but I'm not sure how I'm going to get the message. And so when we're talking, so you can't say, oh, people will cough on Facebook. The odds of someone seeing another timeline are getting less and less, and Twitter's now instituting ads. So I think we have to think about that in terms of thinking we'll just do Facebook questions. So this is one way to supplement that. We still have the meetings, like I said, Neighborhood Council, and I thought, just sitting in the meeting today, a good example of why online options are important. We had about five students that came today at the beginning of the meeting, one of whom is part of the Students for Action, so he's very engaged. He had to leave at 4:00, they all left by 4:30, not because they were upset, they had someplace to go. So it's people like that, they're thinking, how can we just have another opportunity for people who can't be here physically or may prefer conversation? So, and we're starting, just to say one question, I think to get people to sign up, we're starting something that I've wanted to do for a while, which is to have kind of an insider's guide to what you do in Williamsburg. So, and hopefully we can, if we get some traction, we'll link it. So we're going to send this out, we're going to be asking people, okay, if you're a resident, you're a local, someone's visiting to Williamsburg, what's the one thing you think they need to see or the restaurant they should go to or the place, the hidden gem that you know? So we're going to be sending that out and hopefully people will sign up and, because Visit London did a really great job with that, and I think we have a lot of people in there. I don't think anybody else is doing it. So that's kind of how we're going to try to get some traction, some people to sign up, and then we'll be promoting it also at the public workshop. And I think I also wanted to show you what it looks like. I want to thank Emmanuel Watkins and Michelle Wilson, who don't like to be out in public much, but they did a beautiful job setting it up. And it's speakupwilliamsburg.com is the sort of open idea forum, and that's where people can go and talk about the major ideas. I'll be posting goals information. We wanted to hear from your retreat on Saturday, kind of get a sense, I didn't know kind of where you were going or some of the things you wanted to focus on to start. So my, what we found in the past is if you throw everything out there, it kind of overwhelms people. So we'll probably start with some of the issues that you've commented on and we'll just see from there, get some feedback. So I think, is that pretty much?
Thank you all. Let me turn to council for questions, comments.
I'm busy going to speak up Williamsburg. No, I'm really interested in, if somebody wants to sign up, you have to sign up before you can participate.
Correct.
If somebody wants to sign up, they would go to speakupwilliamsburg.com and fill out.
And it prompts you to log in. You can see it if you're not signed up, you can see a discussion, you just can't participate.
And then once you've signed up or registered, you have a unique ID within the system. Is there anything to stop somebody from, I can't carry away with this, but is there anything to stop somebody from creating multiples?
No.
If they're using separate email addresses and such? No, you can.
So whenever, and this goes to Councilman Pott's point, whenever a comment appears on iLegislate, it's attributed through that sign-on. Does it provide the person's name or do they use a nickname or?
They would have a username that they would have created within the system itself. Yes, she would, we would be able to see their first name, their last name, and then their address for them.
But that wouldn't necessarily appear on what we would see?
Not necessarily. You would see usernames, though.
Like we did with open forums, it's a similar thing.
And is there any way to distinguish of the people who sign up, who are actually residents of the city?
Based on their address, yes.
Okay. But you can sign up if you're not a resident?
You can.
Okay. So how do you know the person's using the right address?
There's no real way to go back and, if the address is valid, if it's a geo-referenced address that is a valid address, it's a difference.
One of the, I think disadvantages people may feel when they submit a written comment as opposed to coming to speak at a meeting, is that their voice isn't heard. And I'm not saying that's true, it's a feeling I think that people have. We read all the material that comes to us, but we don't read it out loud in a meeting. So we're looking through it and absorbing it, but anybody who's watching doesn't know what other information we have, and maybe in this case, they could be going online and seeing all that at the same time. Is that the way people would get access to the other information?
Yes, all of, any comment that is made through the website into the agenda would then become part of the record within, of the meeting itself.
So in a way, Francis, I don't know, when you get emails to council, I'm assuming they go into the minutes? I don't know. But so, for instance, this is actually, you're going to see what everyone else is saying. So you'll have a sense of what else is going on.
I guess, I'm trying to think of a way to incorporate this more directly into what people experience when they go back and look at meetings, and it's, I think it's hard in a live environment. I don't know that you necessarily want somebody assigned to read all the comments that have come in, because it would probably be a bit dry. But I'm wondering about with the way we keep council meetings stored on the website, in that exact space, is there a way to then directly connect to all the commentary that was made on those topics?
Well, I think, to me, I may be stretching, but that was the beauty of this. To me, it is all connected, so you're not, which is all these other systems, you think, okay, I'm curious what people thought about the new park that Reid said, and you'd have to go, let's go to comments and ideas and questions. Here, you go to the agenda item, Reid's presentation, comments, video, public thing, it's all there. That was what was exciting about this, right? It's all there. So it isn't often some strange face disconnected. Now, the Speak Up is probably going to be, that's a little bit more of the theory of you're going to be talking ideation, but in terms of specific issues.
Right, because it's not a specific issue that's coming.
Right, but that's what made this unique. It's all tied in, so video, archive, minutes, comments, which is great.
Yeah, no, I think that's it.
I mean, we even stopped, I stopped the pitch when they got to that, because I thought that's all you need to hear.
It's a very different world.
Yeah. I'm going to have another question, but go ahead.
Kate, your point's spot on about the folks who can't attend, can't attend until 5:40 or can't attend at 2:00. This type of platform is only going to become more relevant as time goes on. Really optimistic about students in the community using this. Everyone's pretty comfortable behind a keyboard, so especially if this is tailored to questions that are in their purview or things that they daily interact with, I think it's going to be a big success.
Hopefully, and hopefully there, for some people, it'll spark an interest and engagement. A lot, I think most people are engaged because a particular issue means something to them. And you have an ability to participate in a conversation, maybe they can come.
Tell me a little bit more about how this is pushed to us. So it will become a part of the record, but is the best way for council to view these comments, just visit the website?
Through your iLegislate app.
Were you talking about Speak Up or?
The eComment, the comments piece. Speak Up, the comments from Speak Up will come into your, to iLegislate as well.
Automatically, just like they did in the presentation.
Exactly. But the context, if we're talking eComment, when you comment on, or when a citizen comments on a specific agenda item, contextually, they're bound together within that particular agenda item. Comments that come in through Speak Up, if they're of a general nature, they come in, but there's no, there's no necessarily context to a particular topic. So, but yes, to answer your question, everything goes into your iLegislate app.
Good deal, thanks.
Well, and sometimes, like I'm, we get things from Twitter that I think are interesting. I think we'll both be watching, so if something comes up that might be relevant, we can forward it on and let you know. People can sign up, by the way, through Facebook and their accounts, so that can be linked to.
Doug?
Yeah, well, no real question, but you know, it's clear that the way that people communicate is ever-evolving and technology is ever-evolving, and so I'm glad that you all have kind of stayed up and helped present options for people to communicate. My mind goes back to the National Citizen Survey. I think the city, of all the data that we received, that the only one that we underperformed was citizen engagement at meetings. So we already have a hard time getting people to come, so maybe this will, you know, afford others a way to participate in the meetings without having to be here, so.
It was watching on television meetings and I don't blame anybody for me, but I think, you know, this really does, as has been said, create just another mechanism for people to become part of the process.
I don't know what either of you are talking about. I find it riveting.
Judy?
I just think that we are incredibly lucky in this city to have people who are not only think about this stuff, but then know how to implement it. I mean, I think it's amazing. It's just amazing, and I thank you both.
Kate, Mark, thank you very much.
How many people have signed up, do we know?
Speak Up, I don't know, have you been?
We have, we still know, this is kind of like day one. So hopefully, after this conversation, we have a significant number of folks signing up, but we certainly have the ability to look at that on the back end as well.
How many are on eNotify?
We have thousands. So for instance, if I send out a news item now, it'll go, just as plain news item goes, about 1,200 people, so it's sort of 3,500.
So will they be invited?
Oh, yeah, that goes out on.
Yeah, okay.
One other thing before we leave it, the 30-minute rule is just something that staff has come up with at this point, and the idea was that you could, technically, you could allow comments to come in all during the meeting. The problem with that is you're getting new comments during a meeting and that's just a little difficult to manage. And it's also, you get, your staff reports are coming out a full week ahead of the decision. This is only 30 minutes ahead, but it's designed to give you enough time to look through any last-minute comments just before the meeting, but then when you go into the meeting, you can assume there's no new input at that point because it'd just be too much to ask anyone to do to try to read comments during a meeting. So, but that was just our sense of it, the 30-minute cutoff and give you time to look at it.
I think this is going to be a learn-as-we-do process, so I think.
That's a good place to start.
Yeah, and that seems to me to be a reasonable place to start, but certainly, my guess is as we get into it, it's going to change and evolve.
The other question was, when we have the comments on iLegislate, I don't think to look there now. I mean, I just looked and see that it's in there. Is there a way that it alerts you and?
It'll change colors, the button will become active and it'll change.
Okay, that will be helpful. And I just went to sign up on, sorry, we have one more person signed up. And when I was trying to put in the address, it said it didn't like the format of my address, but I didn't see where it gave me any parameters on the format of how I should put in the address.
It wants your.
Street address.
House number, street address, and city.
Okay.
But we can certainly modify that form to kind of give folks your point of view. We can tell them kind of a different, or what the system expects before they get in their message.
Or an example.
Exactly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, when you create your other.
27.
That's right.
I was just thinking of creative usernames.
Just a general question, do we still have the 411 text, the phone, do we still do that at all?
We do not do the 411 text. We have our new city app that we were talking about earlier, as well as the eNotif piece as well.
Yeah, we're trying to kind of.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yeah, thank you guys. This is, this is going to be fun to see how this works. Thanks. Jack, anything else on civic engagement or environmental sustainability that you want to mention?
Well, a lot of the areas, things we, the renovations and things such as performance analytics, revenue policy refinement is saying, do we need to look deeper into standards for revenue as we, as that general fund gets more and more demand put on it? So that's what, and then operating cost control, employee health and wellness, succession management, and the concept of community vision to exercise, and they're the ones that are on the list right now.
Any other comments, suggestions, things we want to add at this point?
Just as I was looking at Kate, I was reminded of a conversation I had with her and it kind of ties into community engagement. And we used to have this fluff in the Williamsburg campaign with a bumper sticker. I wonder if we could look into kind of having a Williamsburg ambassador program where there's an ongoing communication with the citizens of Williamsburg about bringing their families to visit Williamsburg on special occasions, rather than taking your family and meeting at, say, the Greenbrier. Let's, how do we encourage our residents to bring people to have their Thanksgiving dinner at the end and just talk about the value of visitation and that, and those meal stacks that come into the community? And there's a bumper sticker that says, I'm a Williamsburg ambassador, just begin that conversation so that, you know, we kind of help sell ourselves and get our local, you know, residents to help do that for us. So I don't know where that ties in.
Well, I mean, I'm wondering if that might be an EDA type of discussion, yeah. Maybe that would be a useful place to start the discussion and see, I mean, those are a lot of smart people that think about these kind of things. So, Michelle, might we ask you to sort of get them to engage with that and come back to us with thoughts? And it might not end up there, but sort of how we might think about it. Anything else? Okay, Jack, you guys will take these discussions from Saturday into the day and then come back with a.
And what we get Thursday night.
Thursday night, yeah.
So between then and November, we hope to get something on paper that you can begin to react to.
Okay, and again, Thursday night is at 7:00 at the community buildings.
7:00 at the community building.
We encourage everyone who's watching to come. Okay, anything else for this? Okay, next agenda item, City Council Communications, anything? Okay, scheduled meetings, Jack, anything in particular?
No, I don't have anything in particular to report on.
Okay, that brings us to our final agenda item, which is open forum, time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter, to do so, so if you wish to, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I think we have nothing for a closed session if, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye.